The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we get to begin this evening with a spotlight on our Sheridan Sharks. I'm very excited to invite you today because my family is Sheridan Sharks. We try to stash and share the colors. So welcome. We are excited to have you here.
So I am thrilled to introduce this whole clan here to give you a little bit of information about our Sheridan Student Council, which we brought back this year. It's not been there, I guess, since I came almost four years ago. But it was one of those that I threw out the idea and had four amazing staff members, one of whom is right here with me, who were like, yeah, let's do it. And this is what it became. So I'm really, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Swift, who is then promptly going to turn it over to all of these Sharks for you to hear the great things that they are doing.
So we introduced Student Council, and I would say about maybe eight years ago I led Student Council, and it has, it kind of fell away and for a lot of reasons. And so we brought it back and we said, who's interested? And I think we got thirty-two out of forty-two Sharks, which is a great problem to have. So we gathered all of our Sharks and we had a giant brainstorming session, and no idea was a bad idea. And then these ideas kind of led into four different lanes, kind of naturally. And so, so these are kind of our four lanes that we had going on. And then the kids got to take a survey and choose the one that they were the most interested in. So I'm going to let them tell you more because they are the leaders. We just help and guide and make the phone calls for them. So our first group, come on up.
Hi, I'm Michaela.
Hi, I'm Dimitri.
I'm Lauren.
And I'm Tommy.
Our Student Council group is all about caring and showing our appreciation for the people in our school and our community.
So far this year, we made a presentation and taught the younger students about the importance of Veterans Day.
Our current project is making holiday cards for the staff at Sheridan to show our appreciation.
In the future, we hope to implement some type of encouragement to students during standardized testing.
Thank you. And next is our giving back group.
Hi, my name is Natalie.
Hi, I'm Alex.
And I'm Matthew.
My name is Brummer.
And my name's Isabella.
We represent the fundraising part of the Student Council. Our mission is to give back to others.
We think it is important to help others, and one way we thought of doing that is having some fundraisers.
One thing we are doing is selling popcorn during lunch to raise money for hurricane Ian victims.
We also want to help others by doing clothing, a clothing drive in the spring.
Another idea we have is to organize a field trip to feed bystander children for the fourth graders. Thank you. And next is the recycling group.
Hi, I'm Livia.
I'm Norvin.
And I'm Sophie.
Good evening, District sixty-seven. We're going to be talking about recycling at Sheridan School. This is a big cause and we really want to pay attention to it. Here are Norvin and Sophie with a couple of our plans.
We are going to speak to each class about recycling and hope to work in the lunchroom to encourage recycling.
We are also going to put up signs in the hallway to increase recycling and create an interactive bulletin board for students to help.
Thank you and here's school spirit.
Hi, I'm Asher.
And hi, I'm Nellie.
Our Student Council group is school spirit. We worked together to create an upstander presentation to, to share at our family event. We showed an upstander video that talked about being a bystander versus upstander. Then we talked about ways to be an upstander at Sheridan. At Sheridan, you can earn Shark stickers for showing your spark.
Students can trade in their Shark stickers for various prizes or fun activities. We brainstorm more ideas to add to the list, some ideas we've had. We're adding friend activities, crafts, and extra time with teachers. Our group also brainstorm ideas for our family events. These activities would be team building, crafts, or showing gratitude for, for group, for groups of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the group?
How much is the popcorn?
That's a good question. You guys knocked it out of the park.
Can you guys come up for a picture, please?
Of course.
Why do you have sparkling water and no one else does?
Thank you.
Mr. Carrar.
Aye.
Ms. Bernal.
Aye.
Ms. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Chun.
Aye.
Ms. Mason.
Aye.
Ms. Sands.
Ms. Helms.
Aye.
Motion carries.
They will, thank you. Just want to start by saying this is a tax levy hearing. It is a condensed version of some things that the board has seen previously. It had been discussed in workshop in November and also parts of it were reviewed with the Finance and Operations Committee as recently as last week. I just got a big echo. So it is a little bit, it's shorter than what you've seen before, but it has the main components. So we do want to talk about the impact of the tax levy. Just to refresh you, this is our largest source of funding for the school district, covering almost eighty-five percent of our total revenue. Individually, D sixty-seven currently represents about twenty-seven percent of the total tax bill of a Lake Forest resident. So you can see the other taxing bodies here on the screen, City of Lake Forest, College of Lake County. You see the high school. I have a little circle around sixty-seven. This is the twenty-twenty-two property tax bill, which was a rate of one point six oh six for twenty-seven percent. I also wanted to throw up a little bit, some of the area comparatives related to taxes as well. No need to actually see the detail on the screen, but I do want to point out, we are the lowest by far of all of our competitive benchmark elementary districts. We're at one point six oh six. The next lowest to us is at Lake Bluff, but they're at two point seven. So if you wanted to translate that into dollars, and this is an example that we used in the workshop. So this is based on a home value of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. You can see our tax rate, the taxes on that would be four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. The nearest comparative benchmark to us would be Lake Bluff, where it would cost you just under eight thousand. So it would cost you three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars more in Lake Bluff for the same value home. And I didn't put all of them on the chart, but I also wanted to highlight the other end of the extreme, which is Kildir ninety-six, which is a high performing benchmark of ours as well. Feeds into the Stevenson School District. They're at four oh three one. So it'd be, that same house would be eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. So you would pay considerably more for the same house in those particular districts. Yeah, we are the lowest bar. So that is the one with the least amount of orange, kind of in the middle. So one, two, three, four, five, six from the left. That would be fifth from the right. Clearly the, the least by, by far. And you can see some, many are more than double our tax rate. Taking a look at tax rates, we are capped by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. This is in fact why we're having this hearing tonight, which is a component of that law if we are recommending more than a five percent increase over the prior year's extension. One of the other factors that we look at, and we'll talk a little bit on the next slide, is the value of new property. We also talk a little bit about our debt service, so debt that we have on our existing books, and also the value of our home properties currently within the district. And you will see our estimated in, increase in EAB. So this says, generally speaking, within our taxing boundaries, what do we expect home values to do? Based on preliminary numbers from the county, the overall total value increase for all existing properties is two point four nine percent. That's an aggregate. Obviously, each house could go up or down accordingly. They've also estimated for us new property of seven point nine million. That's lower than our ten-year average, which is around eleven million. So it's a little normal, a little lower than we would normally see. What this means is based on that Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, the maximum amount that we could receive from existing properties is one point eight million. And the estimated increase for new property would be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And this is the same information that's available in the public packet. So I know the numbers are, are small to see, but you can click on that link within our website to see these in further detail. We indicate to you with the left column, which is the existing tax extension from last year. We do a projection in the middle column, which is based on information that we received from the county. Those EAB numbers, the estimated amount of new construction, all of those are preliminary in nature. Those are not finalized by the county until later this spring. So although you're being asked to pass a tax levy now, because that's the law and the timeframe in which we must do so, those numbers will not be known until early next year. Finally, on the right, we have the recommended twenty-twenty-two levy, which is slightly more than our projected. And the reason is, is to provide a little bit of insurance in case those numbers from the county, when they go from preliminary to final, are a little bit different. The last thing I want to just mention, because I don't think that we mention it often enough, but is, there is further information related to our financials on our, on our new website. So you can see our annual financial reports, our annual budget reports. There are monthly financial reports posted in part of the board packet and also on our website. Those will also include what we call a fund balance report, which will show basically the fund balance and cash position of the district.
I'm moved.
Second. Ms. Mason. Here. Mr. Chun.
Here.
Ms. Levert.
Here.
Ms. Sands.
Here.
Ms. Bernal.
Here.
Ms. Helms.
Here.
Mr. Carrar.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Team needs. Last time, I think it was different. Okay. Our communications team has worked tirelessly to support our leaders, staff, teachers, and parent groups in their efforts to keep our community informed and engaged. A new website was launched with input from numerous stakeholders. School newsletters were all reformatted and new tools are being used for publishing them. The Let's Talk series was launched to provide a forum for our leaders to participate in dialogue with our parent community around areas of interest. In addition to being published digitally, insight is once again being distributed through the mail to our broader community, so everyone has access to our school stories. Our social media presence has increased and is being curated with intention to meet people where they are and provide school stories through a variety of vehicles. And a communications boot camp was held for our parent organizations hosted by this department, including opportunities to learn about Google Suite and Canva, among other tools. Finally, our superintendent's office recently launched D sixty-seven four-one-one, a digital publication to provide our parent community with top highlights and happenings from across the district. Behind the scenes, work done in the areas of finance, operations, and technology, which is less visible to the public and school community, has included negotiating a new contract with our SEIU support staff employees, shifting all technology support roles to shared services, reducing school fees, and increasing our teacher assistant compensation. Tenure Facility Infrastructure Needs Outlook has been developed and a comprehensive safety and security review has been completed. A number of upgrades to safety and security that were known prior to and confirmed by this review are in the process of being implemented, and additional recommendations in response to the review are forthcoming. A food service review was conducted. An ongoing collaboration with Quest Food Services continues to focus on improving service and offerings. And finally, we are in this final stages of planning for some building improvements at Cherokee that have been prioritized due to some ADA needs in that building. As you will hear in tonight's assessment report, while there is evidence of greater than expected in growth in some schools and grade levels, there is also significant room for improvement, particularly in comparison to our peer districts. This is the work ahead. The good news is, we have a phenomenal team in place leading the work, and it has already begun. Our students are in good hands because we have exceptional teachers who are utilizing a growth mindset to engage with this work. In partnership with our school leaders, they are already adjusting instruction to better meet the needs of our students based on this data and their growing understanding of the science of reading. They are also implementing strategies to better support students as they prepare for the spring IAR testing. So as we reflect on twenty-twenty-two, we know a lot has been accomplished. And as we look ahead toward twenty-twenty-three, we know there is more rewarding work to do. On behalf of the board, I hope that everyone has a joyous, restful, and rejuvenating winter break and look forward to engaging in the work ahead when we come back together in the new year. Thank you for joining us or for tuning in tonight.
Thanks so much, Suzanne. For tonight's superintendent's report, I will be covering the following topics, which include a touch on the assessment report that you'll hear a little bit later in the meeting, an update on strategic planning, a touch on an update on what's happening with the bond referendum in one fifteen, professional development and national visibility that happened in the last month or so, and then finally concluding with winter break. As we look towards the assessment report and around academic excellence and its update that speaks to it, last month, I've shared that the Illinois State Board of Education released its twenty-twenty-two Illinois State Report Card. Suzanne also alluded to that in her report. As a reminder, that's a compilation of the education data from schools and districts that provide a detailed look into each school's progress around academics, climate and culture, as well as financial investment. Each of our schools received a summative designation of commendable. And consistent within our own analysis, the underlighting data shows us that we have work to do. That work is already underway and was already underway, and it's constantly seen in the hallways of this building as well as in the actual school buildings. For example, last week, there was a group of teachers who were with us, and, excuse me, a group of administrators that were with us and building coaches as we evaluated potential reading curriculums that are going to be piloted in the spring of next school year. So there was, there were vendors here, there was a lot of question and answer, and a great deal of time that was invested by the team to determine of the curricula that was selected, which one of those do we actually want to go forth with a pilot? Tonight, Dr. Michelle Shin will present the District sixty-seven twenty-twenty-two assessment report, and I'm excited to share with what she has to provide for us. Because it is, as Suzanne talked about, the work that is in front of us right now, and we are excited to do that work. As I move towards strategic planning, we have adjusted the calendar slightly. So I just want the board to be aware. I originally thought that we were going to be ready to present for board approval the new strategic plan in February. I have moved that with the teams, in, in support of the team's request and consultation, to the March fourteenth meeting. That is primarily due to the effect that I needed to have a writing team created and together in one spot. We were trying to do that in December, and to coordinate all of the schedules in December with the short timeframe we have from Thanksgiving to winter break, that wasn't possible. So we captured the date of the third design team meeting, which was originally scheduled for January tenth, because all members had that available. So we are putting the writing team, actually both writing teams for both districts will be together on January tenth. And then we will share out the product of those labors on January twenty-fourth, the newly scheduled Design Team Meeting Three. With the intention that once we get that feedback on January twenty-fourth from the design team, that we will edit it yet again and present to you a recommended plan at our District sixty-seven board meeting on March fourteenth. Are there any questions from the board on the rationale of why that changed? Or any questions in general about the process? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next topic. I've been touching on the capital facilities planned for one fifteen and the next steps. Last week, the board took action to put on the ballot of the April twenty-twenty-three ballot, a hundred and five point seven million dollar bond referendum. It's important to note that forty-eight percent of those dollars are dedicated solely to instruction, while fifty-two percent are infrastructure. I want to stress the fact that these are needs, but, these are wants, but not needs, forgive me. And what the objective is, is to protect the historic high school and maintain that public asset to the best of our ability. And by protecting and improving the high school, we were going to extend its useful life, reduce emergency repairs, address ADA accessibility, and so much more, and maintain that that building is viable for many years to come in the future. So you will be hearing much more about this information across the community. We want our sixty-seven family to be well-informed because the students that are attending sixty-seven will be the ones that are reaping the benefits of this investment to the fullest extent. When I look at financial implications quickly, we're looking at a twenty-year borrow, and the total cost is an estimated four hundred and seventy-six dollars in tax increase per five hundred thousand dollars of home value. You will see the number fluctuate slightly as the blue bar drops off. And the blue bar is our current referendum debt service. So that is why there is the change in twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. So it explains the fluctuation on there, but we're estimating four hundred and seventy-six dollars per five hundred thousand dollars of home value. Thank you for indulging me as I talk about one fifteen issues. And I certainly don't want to waste any of your time, but this is such a hot topic issue for all three communities that I want to make sure I give it an opportunity to be, be shared at this meeting. As I move on to professional development and national engagement, in the month of November- November, there was the annual triple I joint conference, and this year, there were administrators attending as well as Suzanne representing sixty-seven and Dave Burns representing one fifteen. The highlight, or the one item that I would highlight, many things to highlight, it was this presenter, which was one of the keynotes, and her name is Amanda Ripley. She talked about high conflict, and I don't know, I was sitting, the whole team was with us, but I felt like she was talking right to my soul because high conflict is what so many of us have lived over the last two years, and she was talking about how to navigate through high conflict as we continue to all live in a world where the poles seem like they are the norms and the middle is swallowed up, and I thought she provided was timely and powerful.
And I'm just gonna pile on to that because I am now two-thirds of the way of listening to this audiobook, which I can't recommend enough to literally every adult human. Like, it is a very compelling piece of work and really helps to get at that idea of these conflicts that are very ingrained in us and them and feel like you can't get out of them. And she has a lot of different examples that she weaves through and people that she talks to. The reason I would recommend the audiobook is because she narrates it herself, and she weaves into it a lot of source information and some of the actual interview information that she used to build the book. So I've recommended it broadly already and just would highly recommend it as a read.
Thankfully, I already had the book on my shelf. If you have been in my office or my home, you'll see stacks of books, and I'm a self-proclaimed bibliophile. I hadn't read it yet, so I devoured it after I heard her talk, and there were three things that, she listed five ways to get out of conflict. The ones that resonated with me the most are, one, when there's a conflict, we should do our homework and see what the rest of the story is because often we are only seeing what the surface of the problem is, and there's much more. And this leads me to my practice of asking five whys when anybody brings something to it. By the time you get to the third why, you usually figure out what the heck they're mad about. When you get to four and five, you can get the authentic experience if they'll let themselves be vulnerable enough to share it. The other one that, the second one that resonated with me was reduce the binary, and she says, find out what you share in common and review the us versus them, and I think we have had to do that every day as we lived through the last, through the pandemic. And then the last one is, don't fall trapped to most stories falling to a hero and villain. It is oftentimes, this is back to this far more gray than there is black and white in life. So again, I can't say enough good things about this presentation. It was truly powerful, and if you get a chance, read the book. In terms of celebrations, I want to give a shout out to these leaders who presented at the TASH Conference in December. And for those of you who don't know, TASH is an international leader in disability advocacy, and TASH works to advance inclusive communities, and our districts, both sixty-seven and one fifteen, were asked to present. There was multiple presentations that occurred, and our team represented us exceptionally well, and I was proud to sit as an, in the audience and watch them share the stories and other individuals learn of the work we're doing and ask us questions about how they can replicate that work in addition to us learning from others as a part of this experience. So just a shout out to these ladies. They were a power team, and I was the lovely audience member cheering them on. I will finish with winter break. The winter sings are going on right now. I think as dad, I'm showing up to one of them tomorrow. We're dividing and conquer because our children are across two different winter sings, but the winter sings have been occurring. Sheridan, Everett's already done, Cherokee is tomorrow, as I understand it, or as I'm told that I will be there with a smile on my face as dad, but an exceptional smile as a superintendent as well. And I just want to take a moment to celebrate everything that Suzanne listed that has been accomplished over the twelve months. The days are long, but the weeks are fast, and in this time of year, I often go through my camera roll and start in January because I forget everything that's happened in my life over the last twelve months, and it helps me reflect on those highlights, that highlight reel of the year, and I couldn't be prouder of the work that the team is doing, and that's across all layers, from board down to any role that you're serving, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a TA, whether it's a bus driver, but whether it's food service, it doesn't matter. We all play a role in this organism that has to achieve homeostasis throughout the year, and I want to wish everybody a restful break because we need it because the work is mighty as we turn the corner for January. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation tonight.
Next, we have our next opportunity for public participation. The board will now hear public comments subject to Board Policy two two thirty. Like for our school boards of education, welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing our guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold all other comments until the following opportunity for public comment later during the meeting. Interested speakers should state their name before addressing the board, and the members of the public will be granted a maximum of three minutes each to provide comment on school district matters. Everyone has a right within reason to be heard respectfully. Members of the public will not be allowed to speak a second time until all members of the audience who wish to speak have been allowed to do so. Public comment should not be redundant, and all comments should be directed to the board. To provide accurate response, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. If the public has any letters or other written materials, they may be submitted to our board clerk for the public record. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our reports for this. Did you? Is it a yes or a no?
No, there's another one.
We will move on to our reports. Dr. Michelle Shin is going to present our assessment report.
I actually feel tall right now. I just want to point out that there are at least five former parents or one current parent in that bunch that all had students at Sheridan, so it is truly a Sheridan event tonight. It was really, it's great to see those kids here tonight. Many of them I had as kindergartners the last year I was there, so it's great to see how much they have grown over the last few years and excited to see them participating. As Mrs. Sands and Dr. Montgomery led into, I feel like they've covered a lot of the highlights of the assessment report, so I am going to cover a couple of things that may be repetitive, but I'm here to provide the academic update for student performance from the twenty-one twenty-two school year. So typically in December, the assessment report is provided, and it includes all of the assessment data collected from the previous year. And during COVID, the assessment cycle really got jumbled, and so we got into a pattern of providing more frequent updates with more timely look at the data that we're collecting at that moment. So in an attempt to keep that practice ongoing, I'm going to provide, we are going to continue that practice of providing frequent updates with real-time data with the hopes that the board and the community will gain an understanding of how the results are used in real time and used during the school year to make ongoing decisions about instruction. So we get data, we review it, and we start looking at what we need to do rather than waiting for long periods of time or long between when data are collected and they come in. So this data, this update will focus on the achievement data from the Illinois Assessment of Readiness and the Measures of Academic Progress from the twenty-one twenty-two school year. In addition, I will provide an overview of the Illinois Report Card, including key components and how they are used to calculate the summative designation for each school. Following the data summary, Dr. Jeff McHugh, our deputy superintendent, will briefly describe the work already occurring in the district. As many of you are aware, the Illinois State Board of Education releases annual report cards for public schools in Illinois. The report card is provided at the district and the school level, and each report card includes information about performance in several areas. It includes the, it also includes the annual summative designation for each of our schools. This is a snapshot of the district report card as an example. As Mrs. Sands mentioned, or Dr. Montgomery, or both of you did, on the main page of our report card, our school summative designations are listed, and all five schools were rated as commendable for the twenty-one twenty-two school year. And we want to be exemplary. Commendable is good, but we want better. The summative report cards, just so the public is aware, are the first designations that we have received since the twenty nineteen school year, and all of the school report card information is public, accessible on the illinoisreportcard.com website.
Dr. Shin?
Yes.
Quick question, if you could go back one.
Sure.
So multiple measures being measured, are the schools measured against themselves, like on a bell curve, or is it, are there set standards for each one of these that that's how we felt we came to be commendable?
So the measures that are listed here, there are eight of them, and each of them have a weight that is calculated toward the summative designation. So they, I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide and share the percentages of how they're weighted with our report card, but they have to do with the percentage of students who meet or exceed standards, our growth, which is typically from historical years, but that has been a little different this year, our science proficiency, our absenteeism rates and our rates and our climate survey. So those are the main ones that are used in the summative designation, although there's a lot of information on your school report card for the district as well as at the school level.
So is it an overall grade that we achieve on our own, or is it a comparison within other school districts, other schools?
We, on our report cards, this is related to us. The growth score is related to comparisons to comparable districts across the state of Illinois in the same grades and the same subject areas.
Okay.
Okay? So the next, if you actually click on the academic progress, the yellow bar on the upper left-hand side of each of the report cards, you come to a sheet like this. This again is the district information. It includes the proficiency scores, which for the district, forty-four percent of our students met or exceeded ELA standards, and fifty-three percent met or exceeded ELA standards in math, the growth percentages, and our participation rate. The participation rate is important. I know Mrs. Sands mentioned briefly in her opening that this, the participation in this assessment is actually part of our calculation in our summative designation. So our rates are actually in the calculation for our proficiency scores. So if we don't achieve ninety-five percent participation, it does count against our overall proficiency score for a particular school. Let's see. The summative designation, let's see, I've got through that, all right. Let's, all right, let's take a look at the data. The results are from the Measures of Academic Progress in Reading and Math and the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. The Measures of Academic Progress allow us to make a national comparison of our student performance, and the Illinois Assessment of Readiness allows us to look at state and local comparisons. So how are we doing compared to our national peers? These data are from the reading map of, from twenty-one twenty-two, and performance across all grades was above the fiftieth percentile, so above average, hovering around the seventy-fifth percentile. Historically, and I want you to note that in the previous slide, the data are represented by the red line. In this slide, they're represented by purple. It's just the way that the data entry goes into our ecosystem, so you're looking at the purple line for this year compared to previous years back to twenty seventeen. What you see is a similar trend, again, above the fiftieth percentile, around the seventy-fifth percentile nationally, but relatively similar levels over the course of the last several years. We also see the same performance in math. Our overall performance is roughly at or above the seventy-fifth percentile, and our performance over time, again, a similar pattern to reading, where our level remains relatively the same. It goes up and down based on the school year and the grade. Okay, so how are we doing compared to state and local peers proficiency in ELA and math? The IAR data have been available since October, and many of you have viewed the scores from District sixty-seven. The next four charts include District sixty-seven scores compared to the state average in comparable peer districts. The first two charts include proficiency scores in ELA and math, and the last two charts include growth scores in ELA and math. All graphs are displayed in a similar manner with D sixty-seven performance as the green bar, their performance as the green bar. All of the districts ranked from the highest to the lowest in terms of their percentage of kids that met or exceeded standards. The state average is the red line, and the peer group average is the dashed black line. So in ELA proficiency, forty-four percent of the students in District sixty-seven met or exceeded state standards in ELA. It is important to note that the proficiency percent is the number of students who met or exceeded standards within a district. It is not a ranking out of one hundred, but a means of comparing quantities. It is not a percentile which is used to order, to display position or rank. So these are not percentiles or rankings with the state, they are the percentage of students within a district that met or exceeded those standards. So for example, Sheridan had fifty-six percent of their students meet or exceed standards at ELA. This equates to the ninetieth percentile compared to the rest of the schools in Illinois. Similarly, Deerpath Middle School West, fifty-four percent of the students met or exceeded standards in math, which equates to the ninety-sixth percentile when compared to all schools in Illinois. Information for all of the schools is included in the board packet that I provided. This is ELA proficiency. Here is the math proficiency on IAR, a little bit higher up from the bottom, but still within the bottom quartile. Fifty-three percent met or exceeded standards in math. And for growth, District sixty-seven performance in growth, growth performance in ELA and math were last when compared to comparable districts and below the state average. This is a graph of our ELA growth at forty-five percent of our students meeting their growth target in ELA, and in math, forty-eight. We were tied at the end, but still lower than we would like to be. So as I mentioned in the overview of the report card, there are eight weighted indicators. ELA and math growth scores, as you can see here, account for fifty percent of our calculation toward our summative designation. Our lowest scores in both areas were in growth. So some key takeaways from this report.
One question on that graph.
Sure.
I was surprised when I looked at it about the chronic absenteeism. Can you say worried about how we are compared to other districts on that front?
It'll be on the front of the district report card. I could go back and look, it does display that. It's counted for twenty percent. We don't, we typically get all of the points toward this. It's not been an issue at our district level, but it does count toward twenty percent of the...
Oh, so this is just how it's weighted?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the weights. All of these get calculated into certain scores, and they're weighted that add up to a hundred. So the biggest is our growth in ELA and math. The climate survey is five percent, absentee, chronic absenteeism, twenty percent, and then we've got an EL proficient, path to proficiency score that scores for our multilingual students is five percent. A note for science on the report cards, the proficiency scores actually indicate the real scores, but for the purposes of calculating the summative designation this year, the state only used our participation. So there's a mismatch between those two things for this year only. Math and ELA proficiency account for fifteen percent. So a big majority of our report card is our growth in each of these academic areas.
So what does growth really mean? If someone scored in the ninetieth percentile one year and they scored in the ninety percentile the next year, is that zero growth?
That's a good question, Rich. I think it's, they have changed how they're calculating growth at the state level because we don't, we're not looking historically, so this year is really a baseline for us. So the data for this year are based on our growth compared to comparable districts. I anticipate going in further into next year that we will start to establish those baselines, and they have growth targets. So for third and fourth grade, there are particular targets that have to be reached every year for fifth and sixth, and they continue to go up, so the bar continues to rise each year that we're in school.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think you all see the writing on the wall. Our proficiency scores remain above the national average for reading and math as measured by MAP. Our proficiency scores remain above the state average in ELA and math as measured by IAR. Our growth scores are before, below the state and our peer comparison district performance in ELA and math as measured by IAR. However, our proficiency and growth scores are not where we want to be. Performing above average at the national and state level is expected, but we want to do better, we want to be at the top. We want to be at the top compared to our peers. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McHugh to discuss the work that has been going on in the district to this point, to address the concerns that we have all highlighted. Thank you.
And just one quick clarification, Dr. Shin. The information available in the assessment report comes from multiple assessments that we do with our kids. We're all very familiar that our kids take MAP multiple times a year, and there are other assessments, and the IAR goes into that as well. The report card is only IAR and the state science assessment, correct?
That is correct.
So, to that point, we're monitoring both simultaneously, and the MAP scores are giving us more real-time data to track our progress. So, when Dr. Shin said that there's going to be more updates in the spring, we'll be leaning in on our MAP scores to track how we're progressing through this school year based on the changes we're making in real time.
But we don't have access to other districts' MAP scores. So, we can only use that to look at ourselves nationally and against ourselves, correct?
Yeah, year over year against ourself and national norms.
All right. And Dr. Shin will be available for questions in a moment. So, what do we do with this? We all agree that our scores aren't where we want them to be. And in terms of next steps, we've, we started our next steps before the state report card came out, which was, I think, October 27th, to be exact. We knew our data wasn't where we wanted it to be. So, I'm going to highlight a few of the, I'm going to go quickly, and if you have questions, that's great. All of these things I'm presenting are pretty large efforts that we're doing across the district. So, number one is school improvement plans. Our principals all develop school improvement plans that support the district strategic plan, but also they're specific to their own data. They did this with teams of teacher leaders. I believe they were presented to you earlier this fall. All four buildings have those, and all four buildings have a goal specifically about improving academic outcomes. We adopted a new six-eight math resource, and that's illustrative. That was back in the spring. We realized that our math resource wasn't getting us the outcomes we wanted. We have implemented illustrative. There's been professional learning for staff to get them up to speed and collaboration time. From all accounts, I was at Deerpath yesterday talking to some math teachers. So far, so good. They really like it. And we do anticipate that this resource will lead to better outcomes than our previous one. I'm going to talk about this for thirty seconds, the amount of work that has gone into the reading review. We haven't been thrilled with our ELA scores for some time now. Last year was the reading review, we thought. It turned out to be year one, because there was so much research we needed to do, and realizing there were some best practices that we were not employing. We took that information, and this is reading review continued, where our teachers now are diving into standards, assessments, and doing work right now. So, this doesn't have to wait until next year. As Dr. Montgomery said, we're looking at other resources that might be a better fit. This is not, we're going to just struggle through another year, and next year, hopefully, it'll be better. Our teachers are doing things right now. In fact, we have, I think, thirty-three people coming here tomorrow to do work on assessments, common assessments that are tied to standards. So, a lot of work is being done now, in addition to, how are we doing phonics on a daily basis at the middle school? How are we doing reading strategies in science and social studies? An enormous amount of work captured on just that one slide. We're looking at instructional time. Knowing that our math and ELA scores aren't where we want them to be, are we utilizing the minutes in the day for these areas? Especially in the lower grades with foundational skills, we're looking at that. And then, we're also looking ahead to next year. Do we have to make some bigger changes to the schedules, both at the elementary level and also at the middle school, in order to have more instructional time on some of these core content areas? And lastly, instructional coaching is the piece that's, that's not only going to help us get there, but already helping us get there. We now have instructional coaches at every building, and they have been working with teams of teachers and individual teachers to take the work that they do. For example, the teachers that come here tomorrow and do the work, when they go back to the buildings, it's the coaches who work with them on implementing those changes in their classroom. So, we look at coaches as the catalyst that's going to make all of this work happen. It's already started, and they're going to be a key piece of this. So, this is just a handful of the things that we're doing, but the biggest thing I want to emphasize, you heard, I think Dr. Montgomery set the stage early on, saying, "We're not where we want to be." And I think that sense of urgency, certainly at the district admin level, we feel that. But everybody's part of this work. The principals are leading this in their buildings. They are instructional leaders, leading teams of teachers on this. And you see a picture here, this is, I think, from early release time, or maybe an institute day. We have pullouts. The teachers are invested in this work, and they, they want to get involved with the collaborating and the learning. We're all pulling on the same end of the rope, which is exciting, but we know we have a lot of work to do. But I feel good that we have everybody pulling together in order to do that. So, both Dr. Shin and I will take some questions.
I got one. Good. So, was in the Navy for a bunch of years, and were full of acronyms all the time, but one thing that was drilled into me is, when you have a problem that you're trying to overcome, what's your poem? What's your plan of action with milestones? You have five things that you're working on here, but what are the milestones, and when can you, when can we check up? Are they scheduled? Can we get on the schedule? What is it?
Want me to take that one? So, from the building level, each building's SIP plan, school improvement plan, has measurables. So, they have current performance, they have action steps on what they'll do to get there, and then, basically, we're monitoring that throughout the year. So, that's at the building level. At the district level, we are revamping the strategic plan, and on that strategic plan, Matt mentioned that the writing is going to be happening in January. We're going to have not only the strategic plan, but then, we are going to have action steps and measurables. That's going to be more at the district level, though, of what we're looking for. Right now, the building level is where we have the hard and fast numbers on that. We don't have targets. We know we want to do better in these areas, but we don't have, we expect to see five percent higher, or ten percent higher at the district level. The building level plans do have that, that depth of detail.
I was going to ask building on that question. The school improvement plans, I know, were formulated before some of this test data came out. So, I'm wondering if you're adjusting them at all, or if it, just if the test scores maybe just confirmed what you already knew, and that you knew you needed to work on.
Can I?
So, we typically receive preliminary report card scores before, that need to go through a process of us looking at, checking for accuracy, making sure everything is where it needs to be before they're released publicly. So, I have this information early in the summer, midsummer, so we use the preliminary information to start. We didn't have the designation and some of those other, you know, comparable to other districts, but we knew kind of the lay of the land. And so, we provide data from the previous year to all of our administrators and building leadership teams to start building the school improvement plan over the course of the summer. They'll do mid-year reviews, and I anticipate they may make some adjustments, but I do believe their, their plans are built on the most current data that we have and reflect. We just did MAP testing, so there might be some changes with that as we start to look into our data for the winter, but IAR, I think, is pretty solid. And the school improvement plans are also posted on the district website for review.
Do you anticipate, knowing the work that you're doing, knowing in more detail what the SIP plans say, that we will see an impact in either winter MAP, spring MAP, spring IAR? Where do you anticipate us beginning to see the impact of all of the work that you're talking about?
Let me go for this one. Ideally, all of them. Now, MAP and IAR are two different tests. So, we're, we have not historically, as a community, put a lot of weight on IAR. In fact, pre-2019, there were many people who said, "I'm going to opt my child out of IAR," even though there's no such thing as opt-out. There's test refusal. So, there wasn't a big emphasis put on by the school district. There wasn't a big emphasis put on it by the parents. Where the emphasis came is, once the state said, "Now, that becomes part of your designation," all of a sudden, in 2019, there was a different sense of urgency. So, that is something that we haven't put a lot of stock in, that now, we are preparing differently. So, we are doing work with somebody from the regional office of ed to work with our teachers, and we don't want to turn into a, just a test prep district, where all we do are teaching to the test. But we do realize that there are certain strategies for that test, that we can equip students with some strategies and tools for that, in order to see better results on that. Whereas for MAP, it's more focused on the standards. The standards we're prioritizing, we think we're going to see that on the MAP test. IAR, it's the practice tests kids are doing, the test prep that they're doing, as well as some of the different instructional strategies.
I want to talk to your point about the measurables and the key results. The new strategic plan, I just want to, I've talked a lot about this in 115, I haven't talked about it here. The new strategic plan will hopefully be recommended and adopted in March. You will see, as a board, action plans for that strategic plan before the start of next school year. So, sometime, 115 wanted to see it at the end of quarter two. I told them, "You can, I'll have it in your hands before school starts," to actually map out the action plans, which will give you exactly what you're asking. And we will then track through Gantt charts the progress on each objective that is spelled out through an action plan, monitoring our progress. And it'll be, it'll be quarterly, it'll be then twice a year, then annually, how we're progressing. And if it's a five-year plan, you're going to see the level of detail that I think would be more akin to what you're experienced from your military experience. That's how detailed my goal is for all of you, because that's how you really track, are you doing the work?
Okay, I mean, developing a strategic plan could be one of those items and a milestone within that poem that was describing. I guess, since I can track my kids, my own kids taking the MAP test and how they're progressing, and how they're, they're going along. They just took the test, so, or is that going to be reported to us at a certain point in time, how the winter MAP test went, and how the spring test went? Just as indicators, is the only thing that I would be interested in seeing. How, how are we changing? How are we shifting this giant barge of a district to go in the right direction?
Yes, Carl. So, we closed the window today at four o'clock. We had hoped to close it last week, but we've had a lot of ill children, so extended it. So, the window just closed today, so those reports will be likely mailed in January. We also have another winter universal screening with our basic skills assessments for our students. So, it will likely be, we also, sorry, received the updated ISA science reports from the state that they sent out that were in error. So, it's likely there will be an update and a mailing in January that includes all three sources of information. And I will be looking at an update for the board in terms of what that historically looks like for those data.
We're going to be seeing the building level. The real-time answer to your question is going to be reported as the SIP plan data comes in simultaneously, while we're building out the district measures as well. So, you will get both the here and now and long-term action planning.
Okay. So, we'll see the, we'll get a report in February and how we did in the winter MAPs?
Fair.
I lost, oh, yes. I mean, we have three different assessments that are going on over the course of the next month or so. So, we're going to package them with a letter and send out one mailing. However, if you want, if you have questions about your child's scores, we do have access to them. Schools have access to them now. They'll be using the data upcoming in January, too. We have our interim, our data reviews. So, buildings will be looking at that data at the universal level as well, to inform where they're at in their strategic, their school improvement plans.
And then, you can anticipate board discussion in February about how we're tracking from a global standpoint.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I just have one comment, or just a question comment, I guess. There are resources that you haven't touched on here, the Math Resource Center that parents can use at DPM, and kids can go. There are ways that parents can take accountability, too, to help, you know, it's not just the school. I'm just wondering, within, you know, eight to three is school, what are strategies that parents can do that we can all agree on as a community to, if we're all concerned about this, to say, "As parents, we will do twenty minutes of Khan Academy math at home. We will do reading," so that it's not just looking at the school to solve it all for us, that, you know, these are our kids. So, we, too, should be a part of the solution.
Yes, I, I appreciate that. We love that parent partnership. I think it's going to look different depending on grades, depending on the child. I think one of the biggest things you can do is be dialed into your child's education. How are they doing? Monitoring that, if you have a middle schooler through Schoology, how are they doing on their assignments and their tests? With the younger grades, see what's coming home. And if you have questions, reaching out to the teacher, and then asking, "What are some of the things you can do to support at home?" We do have Math Resource Center at the, at the middle school, and there's lots of opportunities if kids need extra support. But I think talking to the classroom teacher is the best thing you can do, and they can let you know what your specific child needs to do to help.
I think I asked this question before, Jeff, but I wanted to ask again. What are the other districts doing differently than we are not doing?
Is that me, too? That's a very complex question, because they're doing a lot of different things, to the point where, several years ago, we looked at, let's look at some of those, for us, it's the comparables, right? We don't compare ourselves to the state or the nation. We're looking at those eighteen other districts. What are the people all the way to the right doing? Is there a silver bullet? Is everybody using the same resource? They're not. There's people using different resources, different strategies. In some cases, it's the number of minutes that they're, that they're teaching. In some cases, it's, there are schools that are very heavily into test prep. There are some schools that aren't offering some of the offerings that we have here in Lake Forest, that are here for the whole child. So, I think what we're trying to do right now is figure out, how do we keep the great things that we have going? Because we have to be careful. We don't want the pendulum to swing. We don't want to make everything about this one, it essentially is one test. I mean, I know the science test is in there. It's this IAR, which used to be Park. We don't want to make everything about that. But I think Matt has done a great job of saying, "We shouldn't be teaching to the test. The test should just be a result of the great learning that is going on." So, our focus is on the learning, are our kids learning the standards? Can we teach them some tools that make, that gel with the test they're being asked to take? But we also don't want to lose some of the great things. We don't want to lose the love of learning and all these other great offerings we have. So, we're looking for that sweet spot. But the short answer to your question, Emily, is there are some things that people at the top are doing, and we are planning on going and doing some school visits during this reading review. We're doing this deep dive into some of the resources to see, what are you doing? It's just complex, because there's a lot of factors that go into that. I wish there was a silver bullet.
I want to build on a small example. Nine years ago, I moved the middle school, maybe, I'm going to change, eleven years ago, I moved a middle school of which I was principal of at the time to a blended schedule with partial blocks, and I doubled the amount of ELA and math time that the students were exposed to because of the change in the standards and the rigor that was associated with it. Many districts in our comparables have also made changes, particularly in the middle school, with how much instructional time is dedicated to math and ELA. We have not made those changes. And when you look at the amount of content that needs to be covered in those two disciplines, it is exceptionally difficult to do that in a forty-five or fifty-minute time span. So, it's, it's not a novel idea. Many of our peers have done it, and it's one of the major reasons we're looking at the DPM schedule right now, on how we're using our minutes.
And just a follow-up question. I know, Jeff, you mentioned a lot of the work happening in these kind of different categories. Can you give examples of, like, the instruct, or not the instructional time, but like instructional coaching? You said the coaches are kind of working through a lot of this stuff, and then taking it back to the buildings and whatnot. Can you give me an example of what they're, how they are going to respond and help these teachers in the classroom pull from this data and help the kids, you know?
That's a great question. So, one example could be, are grade levels, I'm thinking from the elementary lens, they have data meetings. So, they don't look at data just once every, every three months. They have fairly regular data meetings, would you say, what would you say, at the elementaries?
I would say some grade levels are meeting weekly at Deerpath. There's a set schedule built in for Jada Lake and for grade level meetings. So, we're trying to shift the practice from a, we look at data only at certain times, to a formative process where we're ongoing, looking at student performance, the data we have, and making changes along the way, rather than waiting for a test score that comes at the end of the year to give us.
rather than waiting for a test score that comes at the end of the year to give us an overall performance rating. So we have shifted the conversations really to everyday practice for some gen ed teachers. For others, it's a work in progress, but some grade levels month are weekly, some are monthly. Our coaches are regular parts of those, they're, they're, they're learning some of this too, so they are part of the data meetings. They are part of reviewing data with us as an administrative team and are there to take back. I think with our reading review, for example, we had grade level bands and certain staff that represented each of the building, and there was a coach as part of that. So they're kind of the glue back to the building and the cohort that went through that process at certain grade levels to provide continuity throughout, teachers who didn't participate in it, but allow that conversation to spread throughout the building.
And for that example, at a data meeting, they're looking at student data and saying, our students are really struggling with this skill. They talk through, what standard or standards do we need to bolster up for that? The coach is sitting alongside these grade level teams, and then when they go back into their classrooms, the coach is pushing in and working with them. It could be they're modeling it for the teacher, it could be they're co-teaching with the teacher. It could be they're gathering data while the teacher is teaching and cross-pollinating across the different classrooms in the grade so that everybody is moving forward. I think in professional development, they get all these great ideas, and then teachers go back, and teaching is hard. So they're going back to this classroom, trying, trying to do these things. The coach gives that support to actually put those things into play, and research has shown that's how you, how you move things forward. So they're working alongside the teachers in, in implementing those changes. That's one example of how that might look in, at least in elementary.
I'm just curious about this as well, so I know we don't want to necessarily just focus on scoring perfectly in a standardized test. However, you know, certainly having kids exposed more often to like quizzes or things of that nature could at least prepare the students for that standardization test, sitting for long periods of time, you know, answering the questions, filling in the bubbles correctly, you know, that kind of thing. Has there been consideration to looking at that, you know, and more than just our core subjects, you know, having quizzes and like health or something like that for our, our middle schoolers? Just to, again, continue to expose them to these time limits and these expectations as they continue to move through.
Yes. Assessments has been a huge topic of conversation, and I think that's going to go on long after the reading review is done. I think it's not only the idea of taking a quiz, but we're working on the structures of what they're taking so that it's lining up for some of these standardized assessments. For some of it, it's language. One of the things that came out in, from a professional learning we did last month was, in one grade, they were calling it main idea and detail, and another, they were calling it claim and evidence. And what, what do they call it on the IAR? Why wouldn't we call it that? We were, we were using the phrases that were coming out of our curricular resource. Why wouldn't we align that across the grades for the IAR, because that's what we're being measured on? So that's a, that's a small tweak, we're talking about the same things, but we're helping people get aligned on the language and structuring those quizzes too, so that when they do take the IAR, it's a familiar format that they're getting used to. So I think we're, we're doing some of that work, that's a big lift, and it's going to continue. But when you mentioned not just the core subjects, all, everybody is involved in this. At CII, at early release yesterday, I was at Deer Path, every single group of teachers was together talking about how they could take a strategy and use it with their kids. So really, it truly is every, all hands on deck for this.
And this morning, I was meeting with, I had my one-on-ones with Megan and Sam today. And Megan was sharing and celebrating the wellness department and how they were rallying to say, tell us how we can be a part of this, what language can we use, how can we design our lessons to support this work? So it is, this is not an ELA and math problem to solve. It's not even a problem, it's how are we continuing to support our students to the best of our ability? I can't stress enough that, that we are not teaching to the test. The test scores shouldn't matter in an environment like this. And if we start to see numbers like this, it, it's a symptom for other work that needs to be done, and that's the work we're engaged in. But you will never hear me say that I care mightily about the test, because I don't. I care that we are providing standard-based instruction for our students that's rigorous, that's challenging them to move and grow regardless of what their pathway or capabilities are.
For the superintendent, how does Vale play a role in what we're trying to do here?
Every element that we shared tonight, it, it is her office, bless you, she is leading this work.
All of it, Rich, like all of this, she is front and center on, with a lot of support from our other directors and the principals and the teachers. But no, Vale is leading the work from, I believe, her school was the highest performing school in her former district.
I think you say that we have a ringer in our district.
And, and she's paired up with our district literacy coach, who is also phenomenal and carries a lot of expertise and knowledge of our buildings, so we're really lucky to have both of them.
That's just to show the community that we are taking this pretty seriously, so.
This is all hands on deck?
Right.
This is, this is all of the work, like this is what we do, we're, we need to educate kids and we need to move, we need to move over.
And I, I want to just hit this one point. The staff has bought in that this is the work that needs to be done. I want to celebrate their work and their willingness to come to the table and say, yes, this is not where we want to be, and yes, we're going to partner together to achieve this progress. And I have worked in places where there was a lot more, I had to do a lot more selling. There, there isn't selling happening right now, they're saying, how can we move faster in some of the conversations? So much so that I think Jeff, Vale, Michelle and I are like, we have to be methodical and strategic while still celebrating their desire to fix anything that they think needs to improve as fast as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on?
Can I just say one more thing? Because there may be other parents watching who are struggling with this too. I think you all know that when we changed the schedule at DPM earlier this year to have early release on Mondays, I asked a lot of questions about that and struggled with it, because what I'm seeing on this list is something that says instructional time. What I've heard from you all since then, over and over again, is that that time is incredibly important to, to building a cohesive response. And so when you're talking about instructional time, I'm trying to keep in my mind that this is time that you can find in the schedule that doesn't take away from the excellent other programming, like the band program, that, that we can spend within the schedule we have, because I, I trust you that this is, that hour every week is, is really important to what we're doing.
The, so I'm just going to come back to the meetings I had this morning with the principals, who have mapped out every week of how they are going to engage in this work, and without that dedicated time, our ability to progress would be slowed down to a point that I would personally be uncomfortable. They're so protective of it that when district office is asking to take some of the time, they're saying, they're not saying, we're all set, let's go. They are, however, saying, they're asking the, the district office, why do you need it? Tell us the importance, because here is what we have planned, and it's, here is how it's aligned, so we're having this dance of, there still isn't enough time to do this work, and without that work, we will not be able to improve in a rate in which I think this community will be pleased with. So I know that many people struggle with that change. Without it, the instructional, so if you give them more instructional time, but you don't engage in this work, we're not going to see the transformation in practice when we are actually engaging in teaching and learning. You cannot separate them in my mind, we need to invest in PD in a real way. And this hour is scratching the surface in a way that we weren't be able, weren't able to do without it, and we still could benefit with more time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our committee reports. The first report is the Education Committee, which met on Thursday, November 17th, here at West Campus. We were joined by Dr. Miquel, Vale Keizer, Michelle Shin, Joanne Ford Halverson, Amy Lombardi, Stacy Weber, and Nicole Hanneman. In addition to talking about the assessment report, which we just covered, so I'm not going to talk about that, we had some presentations around the professional learning structures and the professional learning that is available and that is being utilized across our district. So hopefully, all of you had a chance to look through that. What's wonderful about our professional learning is that that structure, those structures already existed and were ready to do this work. If those structures had not existed, if we didn't already have the coaches put in place and things like that, the work that the whole system is doing now would have, I imagine, been a lot harder, because the structures wouldn't have existed yet to do the work. And so you've been able to really, I know Vale has emphasized to us how grateful she is to come into a system where she's not building those structures. She just gets to lead and use them. So I would encourage anyone who didn't have a chance to review that report, to review the Education Committee report. But we will move on, because we've been talking in such detail about a lot of the things that were covered in that meeting. Next up is Finance and Ops.
Thank you, Suzanne. We also talked quite a bit about the tentative levy, which tonight will not be tentative. But we did meet in early December on the 7th to educate the Finance and Operations Committee and anyone who wanted to join us on the main components of the levy. In addition, we talked about the five-year projection model. Some of the major assumptions that are part of that model are future CPI increases along with new construction, labor, and infrastructure. So not included in the five-year projection model are the D sub renewal, other renewals of other revenues, special ed grants, and district and departmental requests. We talked about property tax prepayment option, which is new. The Lake County Treasurer's Office will now accept prepayments for the tax year 2022. Normally, you pay those in 2023. You can pay your property tax by December of 2022, if you prefer the write-off this calendar year. And future scenarios were discussed, each department submitted what they believe are their future needs. And we talked about the fund balance, the projected fund balance for our budget for 2023 is 17.38%. Our guideline for the district is between 15 and 25%. So in summary, we had a tentative levy robust presentation, which is included in the packet tonight, along with great conversation on the five-year projections, and that took up the entire meeting. Our next meeting will review food service and student fees, because we just ran out of time. The next meeting will be February 14th in 2023.
Thank you. Any questions for Alice? Okay, Policy Committee?
Thank you. The Joint 67-115 policy committees met last night, it was an invigorating session. I thank Sally Davis, Dave Burns, Marcus Shovarcker from D115 for coming and providing their input to me, Annie and Emily. You'll note that Policy 7:285 is on tonight's agenda. This may look familiar to you, because it was already approved. But we updated the policy legal references footnotes with D115, and we asked that you waive the first reading. So we present Policy 7285 again for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the True North Educational Cooperative 804. We meet tomorrow, and that is my report. Carl, Legislative?
I wasn't prepared to go so quickly. I try to keep this quick. So this report will provide a quick overview of the state congressional work and what EdRed has done over the last couple of weeks to help them push forward some of our legislative initiatives. So the first one is the Illinois General Assembly adjourned the veto session on December 1st, and will enter into a quick lame duck session between Jan. 4th and the 10th before starting in, start of the swearing-in of the 103rd General Assembly on January 11th. There were no school-related issues up for consideration during this time, and we don't, there's none projected for that week in January. EdRed has, has really been supporting some of our, our priorities, and they're going to continue doing so in a new year. Some of them include the tax increment financing reform, and that's to improve the overall approval process of the TIF process. They're also going to be doing professional development and mandated training relief, pressing for that so that we can consolidate some of those professional development mandates and put them on our recertification cycle, so that the older ones fall off the, the requirements. And the last one that they're really working on is the clear and present danger reform. And this is going to require state, require the state to provide resources in clarifying the timeline in which a form must be reviewed, either from the schools pressing up or going the other direction. And really, it's going to provide more transparency for school district administrators. So with that, that's what I have, and just last part of my report is, oh yeah, here it is, happy holidays.
So I wanted to make sure during your report, Carl, to report back to all of you on my participation in the delegate assembly at the Triple I this year. So this was, so I, while I was there, this was my first time representing District 67 at the delegate assembly. And during the meeting, the group rejected a proposed constitutional amendment that would have made the term for the organization's officers two years instead of one. So officers need to be elected for our organization on an annual basis. We then held the election for the officers. The group adopted a resolution that will go into effect next year, which will require that future resolution proposals will need to receive a two-thirds affirmative vote at the delegate assembly in order to be passed. And the reasoning behind that was that actually only a, a certain percentage of the districts are even represented in the delegate assembly. So to have it be a simple majority means that often we could have position statements that aren't even supported by a simple majority of the districts across the state. And so in order to focus IASB's work, this was recommended, and it was approved by the group. As far as the resolutions go that we had talked about, the fund balances miller ratio adjustment resolution passed, the amendments to existing positions around capital funding for school construction and school construction grant programs, and the school safety fund resolution, of which we were one of the submitting districts with 115, also passed. After actually pretty extensive debate and discussion, the amendments to the position statement related to the establishment of a mandates review committee, which was submitted by District 115, and our district also passed. John Noble spoke very eloquently about that proposal during the discussion and was met with actually significant opposition around the idea of a sunset clause for proposals. But finally, after additional discussion and debate, it, that did pass. And then there was also additional discussion and debate around the position statement adjustments for financial contribution for school board elections, which ultimately did pass. The proposals that were not recommended for approval actually were not voted upon at all, because a district has to appeal that recommendation in order for there to be a vote at the delegate assembly. And none of the submitting districts appealed their recommendations. And then finally, John Noble and I actually got to participate in a panel with Senator Ram Vilivam from the 8th District around advocacy strategies. And we talked about the ways that school boards can engage in this work around working with IASB that we've been doing, in working with EdRed, in establishing legislative priorities in order to engage with our legislators and take an active role in shaping the mandates and the legislation that direct our work. Next up, Spirit of 67 Foundation.
Thank you. You can read my full report link on the website, so I'm just going to give you an abbreviated version now. Spirit of 67, welcome, welcome Betsy Miller to the executive board as new secretary. Betsy is a graduate of District 67 and 115 and moved back home to Lake Forest from Boulder, Colorado in 2021. She and her husband Mike have two sons, EJ, a seventh grader at DPM, and Tommy, a fourth grader at Sheridan. We welcome the Miller family and thank you for your service. Crossdown competition, we are excited to announce that in November, both Everett and Cherokee surpassed the 80% family donor participation level, and each have been presented with a $1,500 of discretionary funds. Sheridan and DPM are nearing, so please continue to contribute. Spirit of 67 Foundation is getting ready for the new 2023 grant season. Spirit of 67 Foundation is getting ready for the new 2023 grant season. Spirit is fortunate to be in a solid financial position due to the successful fundraising events and the wonderful generous community. In partnership with 67, the Spirit is interested in supporting the portrait of a learner. The grant process application deadline is January 26, 2023, so please get your grants in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Executive APT.
There was no APT meeting. Full report.
Ta-da-da. We are now up to the action items for this evening, and our number-one action item is the adoption of a final 2022 tax levy. May I have a motion to adopt the final 2022 tax levy?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a comment if I could. So I may be the only dissenting voice here, but I have a couple of points I want to just up for consideration. During, I want to first say thank you to Jen and Matt for the extensive amount of information you provided me over the last couple of weeks, just on the back and forth, one-on-ones, and then during the workshop, a lot of information, and of course, during the Finance and Operations meeting. Now, while asking and pursuing the maximum amount of levy is something we've done in the past, I don't know that it's something that, because we have done it in the past, it's something we should do. While I'm comfortable with a percent increase to meet our needs, I don't know that it's been sufficiently established that our needs are such. Four of the items that were indicated were inflation, capital projects, capital improvements, projects, and then FTE changes. So of all those things, I know that our staff are really pretty much a must fund. And while I recognize that infrastructure needs exist within District 67, and again, I've expressed this before, but my day job does this on pretty much a daily basis to go ahead and plan, program, budget, and execute facilities, projects. My concern is that we're coming into last second, and we have a list of projects that have indicated the different needs across the district, which, again, I fully believe. But what we haven't seen is a capital improvements plan for the district, for District 67, nor do we have a dedicated facilities master plan that I've seen as well. So I would prefer this to be, and those discussion points when it comes to capital improvements and projects, to be part of the budgeting process so I can see that line item, that cost, that we can go ahead and put in a budget, and then, of course, increase the levy to meet as such. As far as the inflation, yes, we are in, there is inflation right now, and we're over But the new tax law that has been initiated allows us to go ahead and recapture anything that maybe we didn't, if we, it provides the opportunity to increase the tax levy less than a maximum and then recapture that in following years. So we have the ability of catching up. So with that said, it really comes down to, I know we have needs. I would just like to see it established, put in a budget so I can go after that tax levy appropriately. So with that said, I'm a no on it, just because I, just going for the max doesn't seem like it's been really solidified and sold to 100% to me, but that's just me.
Anyone else? Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Ms. Benal? Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Nay.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, may I have a motion, is the approval of the supplementary tax levy for debt service? May I have a motion to approve the supplementary tax levy for debt service?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion around this item?
Jen, could you quickly summarize the purpose of this?
Sure. At the time of issuance of these bonds, they only, Bond Council only includes the known CPIs for future years. It's a very conservative approach, requiring a supplemental debt service levy resolution, which is before you tonight, to capture the CPI growth in the D sub that will assist in repayment then of our debt according to our repayment schedule.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other comments or questions, may I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Benal?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our third item this evening is approval of the Siemens Building Automation Services contract in the amount of $74,604.99. May I have a motion to approve the Siemens Building Automation Services contract in the amount of $74,604.99?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion about this item?
Matt, do you mind quickly describing this action? No, I'd rather Jen do it if that's okay.
Need to see when that, when that was lobbed. Sure, we do, and we have been working with Siemens for a significant amount of time, but this, this program includes some onsite visits from their professionals. This includes monthly comprehensive visits. They review all of our current use of HVAC control systems to make sure that we are receiving the optimal level. They do training to our staff as needed and on a pretty frequent basis. They provide 24-hour emergency onsite service, so obviously, it's very important to us to stay up at all time. Many of these systems now are very highly complex and are really software systems, so this also does provide us all of the updating of that software as we move forward. Also, data and backup recovery services in that as well. And then finally, it does include annual maintenance on those systems. So just like at your home where you would have the furnace professional come out and service your furnace on a regular basis, hopefully, this would be the same thing that would be done in all of our schools, all of our, all of our buildings as well. The one thing I would mention that's a little bit unique about this is typically, we don't bring 18-month renewals to the board. However, based on the labor market right now, they would not commit to a longer term than 18 months, and it also helps us get back on a July-to-July cycle. Normally, we would do a three, maybe a three-to-four-year contract, so they were a little hesitant because of that labor market.
Any other questions on this one? Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Benal?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next action item is related to the Sheridan Elementary School Playground. May I have a motion to approve the award for the Sheridan Elementary School Playground Improvement Project to Hacienda Landscaping in the amount of $164,050?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions about this? I will just mention that the equipment that is going to be installed as a part of this project was granted by the Spirit of 67 Foundation, so we are grateful to them for that equipment. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Jen? Anyone else? May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Benal? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have an approval of waiving the first reading of Policy 7285 as indicated by Mr. Chun. May I have a motion to approve the waiving of the first reading of Policy 7285 Anaphylaxis Prevention Response and Management Program? So moved?
Second.
Are there any questions about this policy?
One question. Why are we seeing this again?
Because we updated the footnotes.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Benal?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now that we've waived the first reading, may I have a motion to approve policy, the second reading? May I have a motion to approve Policy 7285 Anaphylaxis Prevention Response and Management Program, second reading?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Helms? Ms. Benal? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have an approval of a future meeting. May I have a motion to approve the scheduling of a joint closed meeting with the Board of Education of Lake Forest Community High School District 115 for Tuesday, January 31, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM, to be held at the administration offices at 300 South Waukegan Road, Lake Forest, Illinois, for the purpose of discussing in closed session the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Nay.
Ms. Benal?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item before we make our motion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of the Human Resources Report, Activities Athletics Test Prep Assignments, Change of Assignment, Leave of Absence, Resignation, Approval of Disbursements, Payrolls, and Financial Statements for August 2022, Minutes of a Regular Meeting and Workshop for September 28, 2022, Minutes of an Executive Session for September 28, 2022, and Minutes of a Budget Hearing for September 28, 2022?
So moved.
May I have a second? May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Benal? Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries. We had some FOIA requests since our last meeting. Jeff Prenkatt, complete. Sidney Ryan, complete. And Quaro Gomez, also complete. And now we come to our next opportunity for public participation. At this point, the board will hear a second opportunity for public comment, subject to Board Policy 2230. This opportunity for public comment will be limited to 60 minutes. To reiterate, after being recognized by the Board President, interested speakers should state their name before addressing the board. Members of the public will be granted a maximum of three minutes each to provide comment on school district matters. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Hello. My name is Kelly Cohen. I am the mother of two kids at Deer Path. Thank you for your time and your volunteering. Mr. Karar, I just want to start by saying I think you were spot on, asking to postpone the tax levy clearance, the capital facilities plan. I think that having a more defined expenditure plan is very important, which is kind of why I'm here. My son, we'll call him LJ, has been in the district since he was in the pre-K program, early learners at Sheridan School. LJ, for those of you who know him, is a magnetic fiercely positive and intelligent young boy who was born unfortunately with a rare genetic condition that causes physical and endocrine abnormalities. The physical abnormalities are due to what's called fibrous dysplasia, which are benign bone tumors. It's similar to the more commonly understood osteogenesis imperfecta. Through the years, he has been in the district, he has had multiple obstacles physically navigating the school. When in kindergarten, I researched the best choice of elementary schools. I was shocked to learn that there at the time was not an elementary school that could accommodate a student or an adult using a wheelchair fully. ADA noncompliance also was apparent at Deer Path Middle School. After interpreting how this could be, it became evident that ADA compliance has two differing interpretations. I would like to reframe the picture of what ADA noncompliance looks like at District 67. Beginning in 2017, I began advocating the Board of Education in the then Superintendent for Upgrades. I'm going to read you part of a letter that I wrote to the Board of Education in January of 2018 in the superintendent. "As a parent of a child that will have lifelong mobility struggles, I am trying to prepare for his future needs. I appreciate your willingness to thoroughly examine the layout of your buildings. There are not currently any elementary schools or middle school that can provide a child who would use a wheelchair without significant barriers in a timely manner or ease to go through school. Given the age of the schools in District 67 and lack of any modern accessibility, I expect that by the time my son Liam is in middle school, the district will have made appropriate remodels so that he would be able to, with ease and independence, navigate his school. I do understand this will not be the case for his current elementary school, but I fully expect that within the next four years, reasonable modifications will be made throughout the district that will no longer prevent a child who uses a wheelchair to gain access to their education." First day of kindergarten, I walked in the school, and it was promised that the kindergarten classrooms would be moved so that he can have access to them, but for facility purposes, it didn't happen. So there were stairs to get to kindergarten. So when my son used the wheelchair, he would have to get picked up, put into kindergarten. There was the compliance part of it, they were granted because there was a chairlift. However, the staff was not allowed to use the chairlift. This is what really pushed me to start advocating for a ramp at Sheridan. It took a couple of years, but we got one. And by that point, Liam was out of kindergarten, but it didn't matter because somebody else is going to go to kindergarten in a wheelchair. First day of middle school, seven years he's been in the district. I walk him in, I ask a teacher, "Oh, can you show me a bathroom?" There wasn't one bathroom that he could access independently, not one at Deer Path East. Think about that. It's 2022. I have been politely asking for changes, and I still hear that we're four years, we're three years, we're maybe five years at DPM for upgrading. So what, by the time my son's in high school, DPM will be fixed? That's not okay. It is not okay. The budgets need to be looked at. These modifications should have been done years ago. So we walk in, the first day of middle school, not a bathroom. There wasn't one ADA fully compliant bathroom. Whether it was something minor, where you can't reach the soap dispenser if you're in a wheelchair, or if there's something as major as having the placard on the outside of the door, say ADA bathroom wheelchair access, but the width of the door was too small for someone in a wheelchair to get through.
Kelly, I'm going to interrupt you for just one moment, just to follow policy. We are at six minutes. I am certainly okay with continuing, but I want the board to give that permission just to stay true to our process.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you, if you have a request of us, wonderful if you would get there, but also, please forward us all information that you want us to have in writing as well, so that we have it on the record as well. But I'm going to allow a couple more minutes for you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Basic human needs, like accessing bathrooms, finding rams, shouldn't require parents to tour the school on a yearly basis. It's important that District 67 helped this wonderful child and many others stop turning a blind eye to physical navigating needs. These are rights protected under the American with Disabilities Act, and this is Lake Forest, Illinois. It shouldn't happen. Rethink your budget, fix every school, including the middle school. That's what I ask.
Thank you, Kelly. And if you had more that you wanted to share in detail, please do submit it to us in writing via email. We'd appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us this evening? Seeing none, we have a few announcements. Monday, December 19 through Tuesday, January 3, is our winter break. No school for students or staff. Monday, January 16 is Martin Luther King Junior Day. No school for students or staff. Friday, February 17 is a Tri-District Institute Day. No school for students. Monday, February 20, President's Day. No school for students or staff. And Tuesday, February 21, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here in West I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest District 67 Board Meeting for December 13, 2022.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.